Pledge allegiance.
Thanks for everyone joining us this evening. Just a couple of announcements. The board did meet an executive session for approximately 30 minutes prior to this evening's meeting to discuss two personnel matters, revised, no revised personnel report and a legal matter. We do have everybody present this evening for our meeting. All board members are here in a corner. So we'll move on to citizens comments to the board on agenda items.
Okay, we will check. We do not currently have any electronic comments, but for those watching online at home, if you would like to make a comment to the board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down to the school board meeting item and then click on the survey link to enter your name, your address and your comment that will be read later in the meeting to the board. Back to you, Mr. Fetzer.
All right, so not online, anybody here in the room, are there any comments for board on any agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to our board representatives comments. Chris, I'll start with you today.
Absolutely. With a wonderful opening of school. I think the staggered start idea that that we went with, I think it's a great idea. I know our students, our teachers and our parents, especially for our kindergarteners really appreciate that kind of slow start just gives the kindergarten a chance to come in and not feel so overwhelmed on the first day. So it went, went very, very well. It's, it's just, I'm impressed every single year at how quickly the kids get back into routines. And I think it's a, it's a testament to our teachers and how they, how they teach them and, and recognize them for, for following their teams. The kids are doing a great job. We, I also would like to thank our PSA. They've been working with me with some volunteers to come and help us with our lunches to create a little more social distance within the, within the cafeteria and it was really neat today. We started having a few classes in the library during lunchtime. And it kind of felt like a little bistro, like the kids were just this quiet little hum talking while they're eating their, eating their lunch and they really enjoyed it. It kind of felt like it was a a special thing. But again, we couldn't do it without the help of the PSA and some additional volunteers kind of helping us, helping us along. And I guess just, I guess I'll just say that we had several teachers that we hired for Kelly, whether they were long-term substitutes or permanent hires and we picked some really good people. They have done a fantastic job starting off the year, communicating with their families and their kids are just really enjoying being in their classroom. So we're really fortunate to have the group of teachers that we have. Mr. Watson.
Thank you. I'm just kind of piggybacking off of Chris. I think we had a great start to the year at Lindtown, and I think that staggering that start is very helpful for kids, especially those first year kids that first day reduces a lot of anxiety, just as they know they're the only ones in the building. We can really take our time getting them used to the building, the procedures, the routines. And I think it just gives them a level of comfort, knowing the whole school's not there to start. So that, that has gone over very well, I think with the families and with the staff of all of our, our kids. It's also been great just seeing, we've met throughout the summer with Chris, with staff from Kelly, with parents, just some of the kids that are transitioning and it could be, the parents just had some concerns knowing it's going to be a transition, their first transition from one school to the next. There are some different things that have happened in the kids' lives and just seeing how quickly the staff have been able to build that comfort with the kids, the trust with the kids. They learn it's with a new school, there are new places they can go if they need breaks or new adults they can go to. When different things come up and we've had kids utilize that from the start to come in and start off just checking in and having like an informal conversation. Taking a break and they know this is a place they can go and that's a good spot to kind of get them re-centered and ready to keep going with the day. So I think the staff have done a phenomenal job very quickly getting to know the kids and just creating that nice welcoming environment where the kids feel it's a safe place that, that they want to be and that they know that they're wanted. Also, we have started the process of getting kids just their awareness of the music program at Lewisburg, which is always exciting at that age group. It's their first chance to get involved in orchestra and band. So we had beginning of the week, the music recruitment where the music department comes in and talks to the kids about the different instruments. They, they show the instruments, they'll play them and it was awesome. They played songs that the kids would know. So some of the kids, they like, they were kind of sitting there and thinking, oh, a French horn. Yeah, that's interesting. And all of a sudden it's like the Jurassic Park theme song or a song from the movie Sing and you see kids bouncing up and down singing along. So it was cool just to see that energy and excitement. Then tonight there was the musical equipment rental night where they talked to families about that program and how they're able to rent musical instruments as they start their, their career playing. And then next week, we're going to start up with individual lessons. Before we, we're working on a plan for the ensembles and how we're going to do that. But I know they also want to start with lessons, kind of working out those cobwebs of the returning players and just start with the basics with the, the other kids before they bring the group together. And that's pretty, I guess that's pretty much all I have for now. So pass it on to George.
Similar things happening at the middle school. We started school like the other schools. And we were able to bring back a few things that had been missing. PBIS program relies heavily on being able to train kids for where our, what our procedures are and ideally in the location of those procedures. And we were able to bring that back and break kids up into smaller groups, not whole class sizes. Last year it was the homeroom teacher was responsible for all of that instruction. And a little bit got missed depending on who your homeroom teacher was, they may have been fully knowledgeable about assembly that had no idea how it runs in the cafeteria. And so it was bringing the, the staff together to make those procedural aware, you know, the instruction this year was very interesting. We had an orientation night earlier last week with the sixth and the seventh grade. I haven't seen that many people in the gym in a long time. It was really well received. It was roasting in there. But the entire sixth and seventh grade community showed up to hear about what's, what's going on with the school and to see where their kids are going to be spending so much of their time in the coming year. We had our back to school night for eighth grade parents last night, not nearly as well attended, but important for them, the eighth grade parents to be able to meet with the eighth grade team and the related arts teachers to get a feel for, for what we're doing in the classrooms. And one last thing is that I was able to meet with every student in the building in class meetings to go over some of the more or less to, to give kids a pep talk on what we hope that they could accomplish this year and where this year might lead them down the road. But it was interesting to do it in the gym rather than, it used to be in the LGI room, smaller than this, and all the kids would sit on the floor in the rooms. Doing it in the gym, again, a little warmer, but very effective. And the kids, you know, having a view from the front row lining the, lining the gym court, the basketball court, I could stand on the center circle and talk basically to each kid about that. And it was, that was well received as well. So we're off to a good start. We're still working on some of the ins and the outs of how this year is going to look. It's very different than last year, which is very different than the year before. And we're trying to come up with things that are going to satisfy as many people as possible. Mr. Popovich.
Thank you. The high school is off and running as well. So students have come back. So it was nice for me to see as a first time employee into the district, seeing all students come into the building. It was just good to meet some of them, introduce myself. It was also good to meet faculty as they came into the building as well. And then a couple of highlights from the first week of school here. The courtyard outside of the cafeteria has been certainly well received by the students. So even with it being relatively warm out there this week, there still has been a pretty good handful of students that have been using that area quite frequently. So there's some shade out there. There's some benches. Some students have been sitting on the like brick bench areas. So that is a great addition to the school and we certainly thank the Green Dragon Foundation for that. With the new website, there is educational trip forms that are now posted on that site and is currently being used. So we have gotten quite a few sent into us and as they've been sent into us, they've been very easy to process with simple email and approvals and processing it through that way. So that has been quite a simple transition for technology. And I want to publicly congratulate Van Wagner, one of the science teachers at the high school. He received the 2020 forestry award. So in my short time, I've definitely noticed his greatness and how much the students appreciate having him and the, the value that he brings to the community and to the district. So that was a nice award for him.
All right, just to reiterate, I think what everybody has said, the start of the school year has been going very well. Of course, you always are going to have little kinks that you need to work out. As at the high school as well, we're very much in favor of that transitional staggered start to the year. It just, it's so so different watching the freshmen that first day and, and feeling at ease walking through the halls and you know, all of everything they've heard or seen on TV that some big bad kid is going to put them in a locker. They realize that then like, I know where I'm going. And then the second day they realize, hey, there is no kid that's going to put me in a locker. So they're off to a really good start. We held class meetings and in the auditorium this week. Again, it was just nice to be able to hold those. Last year it was probably probably May before we were able to meet with a whole group in the auditorium. And what a difference that makes in setting the tone and especially for the freshmen again to guess, get connected a little bit and you know, some things this year are very different. Some things are the same. So we really had to go back and and really think about what our procedures were because our sophomores, you know, they never experienced the high school as the high school would normally be. So even the simple thing as, you know, teaching lockers and, and different things like that, they've, you know, had to get an awareness of not carrying backpacks because that is the complete opposite of what we did last year. So that has been going very well during our afternoon professional times. We've been focusing on technology this week with our new migration to our email server. Depending on which browser people are using, it might look very different. So we've been doing different staff trainings and a survey went out and some of our staff will be leading those trainings that we're going to do in next week with that as well. And then finally, I want to give a shout out to our senior Addison Straub. So Addie is a little spitfire on the cheerleading team. But this summer, while all of us were trying to rest, relax and recoup, she actually left school a few days early and just came back this week because she spent the last 11 weeks completing her basic training and is now in a member of the US Army. So 11 weeks this summer she did, she went through quite an experience, you know, when they go off and do their last big hike thing, she actually hurt her ankle, but wasn't going, didn't tell anybody because if she wasn't able to complete it, she would have had to start all over again next summer. So that's just a huge accomplishment. That's certainly the first student since I've been here at the high school that has done that. So when you think of summer break and, and then, you know, I've been thinking, wow, and you know, that's quite an accomplishment. So shout out to Addie.
So I first want to thank and recognize our secretaries in athletics, Tracy Strasser and Special Education, Lisa Smith. They are dynamic in keeping both areas functioning and keeping me on my toes and working with them has been a joy and really wouldn't be lost without that. So just want to say that. In the world of special education, I am working with our counselors and school nurses in section 504 to provide training and support as we navigate that process because that is a little bit of a new thing for them in regards to athletics. The heat, our coaches have been great at communicating and working with our athletes, telling them to stay hydrated, taking rest breaks and believe me, I get lots of alerts from our cross-country coaches. So I know that they are really taking that heat to heart and keeping them on their toes. Tomorrow is our first football match away at Shamoken. So if you are looking for a Friday night event and you would like to make that drive to Shamoken, I know our green dragons would love your support in heading that way. So we are starting in those first matches, wrapping up our skirmages. And so we're going to be looking at getting back into some normal game time. And I think everybody's excited about that.
And if you can't personally travel to Shamoken, it is the game of the week, I believe on SE. Yeah, thank you. So you can watch from the comfort of your living room as well, although Shamoken has some of the best concession booths.
Thanks, everyone. It's good to hear all the updates. And we'll just continue right into the presentation section. Dr. Paulin Chalk, I'll turn it over to you for the opening of the school year report.
Well, thank you, principals. I think they really did a wonderful job sharing with everybody how schools been opening so far this year and that the staggered start that we began last year is something that might become a staple. It really does give kids that time to transition into the school. At this point, we're in our sixth full day of being in, but fifth day with the entire student body present in school. Some big changes from last year, this point last year, we had about 26% of our kids are in e-school. We have 2.5% of our kids now in e-school. So that means there's over 20% more kids back in the building and that certainly has impacted the plans that we had in terms of mitigation strategies and some of the social distancing. We're in instructional spaces, working towards having the students be at least three feet apart. And that's within the CDC guidelines. Lunches have been something that we really looked at as well as lunches are now shifted back into the cafeteria as opposed to being back in the classroom. We ended up with students really spending entirely large amount of time just with one or two staff members and each other. And it's really important for them to have that opportunity for some socialization. So we're very closely with both Mr. Rule, Mr. Letzel and Mr. Drosen on how we can reconfigure that. Some things that just take seeing and in action and then being able to respond to that in order to come up with a good plan. And it's been very collaborative with Ms. Moser and our school police officers as well to be another set of eyes to work towards those issues. Other things are that have been happening unexpectedly, unfortunately, or a bus route changes. We really appreciate the community's willingness to be flexible with this. We want to ensure that all of our students do have bus transportation as they need it. Fortunately, we were able to have all those runs, even though some had to be combined. That's not the case in other districts where they don't have enough drivers and that's really going to be very difficult for parents to get their kids to school. So right now, at least we might be a long bus ride, but at least we have those buses and hopefully that will improve as our bus company is able to bring on more drivers. It's been, as it's been mentioned, we do have a new email. So there's been some conversion ups and downs that we've been working through with the staff and also with the students and a new website. But I know the staff has been busy adding information to, we really want that to be the place where parents in the community and students can go for up to the minute information along with social media. It can't go without saying that it's very hot outside. And it's very difficult to make the decision to dismiss students when you know, you may be dismissing small children to homes where a parent may not be available for them because of work or other obligations. And they're safe in school, although they're hot, we are making sure that they're having breaks, doing the best that we can to cool the room, moving to other locations when we can. Some rooms are much warmer than other rooms are. Parents, if your children have any kind of condition which the heat exacerbates, whatever they may have, we're certainly going to excuse that absence. And we have the means for communicating what those assignments and activities are. And the teachers will certainly work with the students when they come back. Hopefully it's just one more day. While it feels awful outside, we haven't received an excessive heat warning. And I personally was a little bit surprised for that, but that's really what we're looking for to be able to make that decision if, if we need to do it. And hopefully this rain we're going to have tonight cools us off a little bit going into tomorrow. One other thing that we're going to be doing is we look at our health and safety plan from the administrative level. We do have language in the plan that if we come to the point that we are at in the plan, it's called substantial. But the Department of Ed, Department of Health transition to using the CDC's scale, the same day that plan was approved. So the language doesn't align, but what it really, the intention is, is high community transmission that we would work with local health and safety and medical experts on what the best course of action for masking would be for students, given that there would be more spread. We have seen certainly people who have been who have tested positive and even vaccinated people as I wear my mask, I can't afford not to be at work for 10 days and I'm vaccinated. So that's why I'm wearing it. It's just one more layer of protection. So we want, we'll be doing that within the next couple of days to consult with them as part of our plan and work with them to see what the best course of action is going to be for our students and our staff, but also their families because they, they return home at night. So we are concerned about them as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for anything? Thanks again, everyone, for the, the updates and the presentations. I will move on next to the refinancing, the funds presentation. Dr. Fairchild, if you want to introduce our guest.
Yes, absolutely. We're joined by Ms. Melissa Hughes of PFM who's here to talk about our refinancing our 2014 A bonds.
I'm going to talk about the presentation that I understand you have electronically in front of you. So the very first page of any content is an interest rate chart. And the interest rate chart generally contains good news. I think the whole story is told in the top graph. This shows since 1993, the range of rates that we have experienced in the municipal bond market, if you had a perfect credit rating. Lewisburg has a really good credit rating, but you don't have a perfect credit rating. Darn. But you can see that range of rates. The red line shows that historic average since 1993 and the blue line shows where we are today or where we were when I made this handout a couple of weeks ago. It's rates are marginally higher today, but visually it would look more or less the same. So this is good news when you're considering a financing as the district may be. So this is the context with which we start our conversation. Rates are generally good. The next two graphs split out the 10-year index for that perfect rate and show what it's done over the last 10 years on a day-to-day basis. And over the last, call it two and a half years in the further zoom in. That big spike you see, that was last year when the market more or less shut down. When the stay-at-home order came in place, the bond market in particular really froze, didn't know what to do. And so trading more or less ceased. They got it together in about three weeks and things pretty much normalized. And by June, everyone was like, what happened? But you know, things did become very disrupted there for a period of time. So with that context, we're going to flip to the next in my, no, I just skipped ahead. Can we go back one or two? Sorry, I'd like to talk about the debt summary. There we go. That's what I'm hoping to talk about. This page shows the district's existing debt service. You have two bonds and one note. Both of the bonds were done to finance the high school. The note was done to finance your portion of the Career Center project that was done. The top half of the page is gross debt service. That's the principal and interest you owe the bondholders. You do receive state reimbursement on all of your issues. So the bottom of the half of the page is the local effort. We want to be mindful of both parts of that when we are thinking about how we're going to structure the new debt. And that's kind of important as we look at the next pages. I'll draw your attention to the fact that your final payment, if you did nothing, would be in 2039. Let's keep those in our mind as we move forward. Now we can go. So this summary looks at a refinancing of your 2014 A bond. In the blue, you can see this assumes that you did nothing on a gross debt service basis. You would save approximately $3 million. And we've structured that level over the life of the issue. So you would receive those savings a little bit in each year. Now it's quite a lot of savings. It's a very efficient refunding. So it adds up to, you know, about $160,000 a year over that period of time. Um, and the John asked us to also show some scenarios where the district might consider borrowing $5 million for what we understand are some HVAC upgrade projects. And you can see in the red, what we've done is we fit that new money together with the refinancing to try to make it fairly budget neutral. They are in column eight and we're doing that by adding small principal payments in until the old debt pays off and then paying mostly the new principal on just this piece in 2040 and 2041. You might be saying, oh no, if I'm not paying principal on those, aren't, aren't I going to have a problem when I get there? You're not going to have a problem because overall, if you look down column eight, your debt service is level or declining on a gross basis. And when we flip ahead to the, to the next page, it's going to be very, very level on a local effort basis. So local effort is after you take into account that state reimbursement. So let's flip ahead to the local effort page and I want to talk about how this is different. It's different in two ways. The major way is when you look at the savings page, the savings appear a little bit lower because the state also shares in the reimbursement. And because they share in reimbursement on the bonds you're refunding, the kind of amount you're starting with as your share is lower, the state keeps their proportional share of the savings, you end up with a lower total that comes to you. But it's still, again, very efficient. And you can see there, you know, it'll be about two and a half million there for a few years and then 2,440 level out to the end of your debt portfolio. I'm going to stop here and see if you have any questions about that before I talk about what time, what the timeline could look like if the board was so inclined. All right. I'm going to flip ahead to the next page. If you are so inclined at your September 9th meeting or anytime thereafter, you could authorize the financing team to proceed. Above there, we've prepared a sample motion which authorizes the financing team, us as your independent financial advisor, Piper Sandler, they're your underwriter of record. So the bank that goes out and finds the investors. Eckard Siemens, which is your bond counsel, they're a very specialized type of lawyer, that this is all they do. And your local solicitor to prepare, to proceed with the refinancing and this has new money incorporated. You can adapt this as needed. If you authorized us to proceed on September 9th, we would then come back at your September 23rd meeting with a parameters resolution. That would be the legal documentation needed to incur the debt. And we did this last year. So some of you may be familiar with it or may remember, but one key point about the parameters resolution, we're going to be refunding and a new money together, about $33 million of bonds. That means your parameters is gonna be 38, 39 million. The parameters number is always larger than the actual amount because we have to get the flexibility to get the building blocks to all fit together right at the end. Just, we always want people to be prepared because sometimes they get the resolution, they say, this is not the amount of money. It's like, yes, this is how it works. At the end of the day, and remember, on the savings, they'll be, you know, we'll have to meet a minimum savings. You can't issue beyond the amount of the parameters and it has to fit in every single maturity. It has to fit within that. And that's why it has to be bigger. Because it's the maturity by maturity test. Assuming that all happened on that timeline, we could have a sale on October 12th or later. And you might be asking yourself, if rates are great, why don't I go earlier? We actually can't go earlier because your call date on your 2014 bond isn't until February. We can only settle within 90 days of that date. We can only sell bonds 35 days in advance of that. So October 12th is basically as fast as we can get there. Behind the scenes, we would work with John and his team to prepare the preliminary official statement. That's a book that's quite thick. John's already done a lot of his part that describes everything an investor would want to know about the district. Help them understand, you know, what are, what is the financial condition of the district? How are you, you? From a bond perspective. And we would go through the credit rating process also. You know, and then assuming everything went well, went well with the sale, we would settle on November 17th or later. That's the first possible day that we could do that. And then you're what would happen then is your money would go in an account to pay off the old bonds on the February 15 call date. And money would go to your construction fund, spend on your project. Does anybody have any further questions?
Just if we authorize the finance team to proceed and then the rates do something wacky and are terrible, are we obligated to proceed or can we withdraw?
Well, what we would do is we would just wait. And I have a great story about this. So in, no, this is a really great story. So I worked on this transaction in clear, a clear field area of school district in 2016, and we put parameters in place and then rates went away. And we just waited until 2019 when the refunding made sense. And we called them up and we said, hey, remember that parameters we did three years ago? That refunding makes sense now. Do you guys want to do it? It's gonna save like $600,000. And their refunding was not that large to start with, but you guys have a pretty, pretty big principal amount. And they were like, yeah, great. So that's what we would do. We would be patient. Patience is sometimes very good virtue. We were very patient last March and April. Yep, it's a good question. The reason we ask for authorization to proceed is because in order to get the credit rating, that's the first time we incur any costs for the district. The only financing professional, only part of the process that costs any money if we do pull out is the credit rating. They're generally good for six months. And if we aren't able to use it within the six-month time period, who knows 75% of the fee? So just want you to be aware of that. Everything else, you don't get paid if you don't do the deal. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our board action under old business. Our first item is the new curriculum materials and pilots for the 2122 school year.
Thank you. You received them last meeting and had them to review. I would ask that we move them forward tonight.
So moved second.
Moved by Dr. Dublonsky, second by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Putzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Dublonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fosero?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the discontinuation of the annual technology fees.
As presented at the last meeting, the administration is asking for the individual student technology fees to be discontinued.
So moved second.
Moved by Dr. Dublonsky, second by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Putzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Dublonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unziger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and the next item is the engineer of record, Dr. Pollenstock.
I know. Ask on Mr. or Dr. Fairchild to jump in at any time. We presented the responses to the request for qualifications for an engineer of record last board meeting. We have a contract here prepared for Barry Isit between the cost of the services as well as the breadth of services that his firm offers. We're, we are recommending that the board approve Barry Isit as the engineer of record.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dublonsky, second by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
One thing the public might like to know is how this fits in with our plan to improve our HVAC situation. I don't know if you wanna.
So the engineer of record is an engineer that's retained by the district to act on behalf of the district's interests with any contractor or vendor for any kind of construction project that we would have. They would have the engineering experience and be able to ask the kind of questions that we may not be able to ask because that's not our area of expertise to review the plans, be that second set of eyes, if there's proposed solution. They would be able to use their professional expertise to say whether or not that is, in fact, the best direction for us to go in. This helps to, in a lot of respects, to avoid, it will never completely avoid everything, but a lot of those change orders or things that we do, and then we have to go back and fix it, and it costs us more money. For that little bit of money upfront, it saves us in the end. And it also helps us to maintain positive relationships with the various vendors and contractors that we have that we work with, since many of them are in the community.
Any other discussions? Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Putzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Dublonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to board action under new business. The first item is the agreement with ELA for the drainage remediation at the baseball field.
So, as you know, we, we did some site work for a baseball field and Green Dragon contracted and brought in a baseball field and it was designed and built according to the specifications as best we could, but as we've all learned, especially recently, water is gonna do what water is gonna do, and it doesn't care what you've planned on. So unfortunately, as I mentioned in the content here, water is running from the gravel parking lot onto the field and is washing away portions of the pitching cage and the left field warning track. So ELA will, if you approve this proposal this evening, ELA will work with us from start to finish to design and then help us get quotes and then implement and make sure it works to keep the water away from washing away our new baseball field. So we would ask that you approve this this evening, and then we'll get started so no more warning track gets washed away.
And if I could just add, this is also where the engineer of record, with their landscape architectural expertise, would also be reviewing those plans as well. So again, that we can make sure it's a permanent solution.
So moved second.
Moved by Dr. Dublonsky, second by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion?
Does, does this impact future plans where the multi-purpose building is being proposed?
No. We're just looking at some swales of basically between the parking lots and the baseball field to divert the water into existing culverts. But it will not impact the concession stand multi-purpose building. Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Putzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Dublonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the tuition student approval.
This is a motion to approve a family who are looking to purchase a home within the district. They are willing to pay tuition up until the time they become residents. So this is an out-of-district student, but with tuition to attend our schools.
So moved second.
Moved by Dr. Dublonsky, second by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Dublonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Putzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to the board information under new business. I don't have anything additional to report at this time, so we'll move on to the assistant superintendent's report.
Thank you. In keeping with the back-to-school theme, principals shared anecdotal pieces in their buildings, and Dr. Pollenstock shared her insights. My piece laying at your desk is exactly to that same theme. It's two sides. The first shows you our size, if you will, our student demographic breakdown across classes at grade levels and then building grade levels in middle school and high school. Our numbers for homeschool students and cyber school students and out-of-district students. So that piece is general information that we tabulate each month. It's always good to take a look at the beginning of the year, and it helps us to plan programmatically as we go forward. On the reverse side, we went a little deeper and I share with you the demographic pieces relative to our ethnicities across the district. Our numbers in special education and gifted education, we're at full capacity in our pre-K counts classroom. And I share with you as well that our before and after-school childcare program has a strong enrollment and that changes daily as, as families' needs for supervised care change. I also shared with you a little bit about the breakdown even in our professional staff, and that chart is there for you as well. Total numbers and our teachers' teaching experience. Again, as we plan lots of things going forward, it's sometimes very good to look at the numbers and appreciate some of that in our planning. And that's my report tonight.
John might know this. How does this cyber charter cost of our students line up with what we budgeted?
Actually, it's funny you should mention that. Mr. Heath was asking about that earlier. This year, we did bump up our budget, our estimated budget to around 520,000. We haven't received all the numbers for, I think we're still missing enrollments from at least two or three of our eight or nine charter schools. But with the current estimates that we have right now, if they hold, our annual cost would be around 775,000. So it's only a deficit of about 250,000 compared to last year's deficit of about 800,000. So it's definitely an improvement.
All right, we'll move on to board liaison committee reports. Anything?
Last week, we discussed and voted on our health safety plan, which passed. And also the superintendent of record discussed the busing concern they have in the district. It's really a problem. We have a total enrollment as a start day of 319 over there, so it's grown. We have a report, a summary of what we discussed or need. Thank you.
Anything else?
The CSI you met last week, you have the report in front of you. One thing that it doesn't say in there is that they are undergoing some pretty serious renovations. A lot of their staff, they realized over the remote workings that a lot of them stay remote and were quite productive as the work was getting done. It allows them some latitude with where people live. It allowed that space for people to rework the space and use it in a more efficient and effective way. And they're also moving the LPM center onto campus because for all of us who actually were able to tour the LPM center two years ago, maybe, over on the old Pennsylvania House lot, that the amazing work that they did there, they did there in spite of that space. So the new space is gonna be pretty spectacular and really take care of. I don't mean spectacular in, you know, all the whistles and things, but just a really good space for that activity.
Any other reports? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Moved by Mrs. Brown, second by Dr. Dublonsky. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Dublonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unziger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman? Yes, except the personal report because I am on it. Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Putzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to director's comments. Mary Ann?
Refinancing is the second round of exciting opportunities for HVAC completion. I just want to say how nice it is having Mrs. Bieber here and having the athletic report and the special, I'm sorry, can't see you because of the COVID. The athletic report and the special report to be part of our regular comments from the administrators. That's a really wonderful change. So thank you for that innovation, and I appreciate that. I continue to be concerned about where we are with COVID. I have a lot of confidence in Dr. Pollenstock. And I hope everyone will be okay.
I just want to congratulate everyone on an excellent start to the school year. A lot of difficulties, but seems as though all the schools got off to a very good start. So thank you all for helping facilitate that. And thank you specifically to the elementary schools for dealing with the excessive heat this week. I'm sure it's not been pleasant. So thank you for helping to make it as best as you can under such difficult circumstances. And I just want to extend the congratulations also to Van Wagner for his award. It's really a phenomenal. He's a nominal teacher and a phenomenal award, so.
Mary?
I'd like to do what everybody said, great start to the school year. Look forward to good things happening this year. I have two comments. One is Bob Brown contacting me from the alumni association. And I don't know if he called John or you, Jen. He was worrying about the spaghetti supper on Election Day. Is that still gonna be okay to have that or no?
I, as of right now, I don't see why it would be a problem, but I mean, that could all change with something else happening. We'll be open.
Back when it gets a little closer.
Yeah.
And another point I'd like to have the board consider is possibly adding to the agenda next month of our meetings, the revisiting of the health and safety plan. Since we're getting to be substantial right now, like Dr. Pollenstock said, we could go high. I think it needs to be revised. That's just my own personal thoughts on it. I don't know how the rest of the board would feel about revisiting that. But I'd like to have some consideration on that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mary. Sarah?
Ditto everyone's comments. I agree, really appreciate Mrs. Bieber being here and contributing. When I first was on the board, we didn't have the administrators come, and that was a bonus. I think helped me be a better board member as well as just more knowledgeable about things. And to be able to have actual conversations is awesome. And to have this extra awesome person that's just joined our team to be able to contribute, I think that helps the administrative team as well as us. So thank you to whoever made that possible. I appreciate it. I appreciate everyone's effort to keep kids in school. My kids are very appreciative. I appreciate everyone's effort to keep kids in school. My kids are very appreciative that they're in school and I just hope we can continue and hopefully the heat lets up a little bit because it's miserable wearing a mask. So.
Mrs. Moser?
I don't have anything additional. Thank you.
John?
I echo what's been said and I'd also like to offer a shout out to Mr. Michael Jones, our student services coordinator and Ms. PJ Brochus of Roar Bus, along with all of our great bus drivers who came together, even though we lost two bus drivers right at the beginning of school, our whole team came together and they worked tirelessly. Mr. Jones worked until 1:00 AM on Tuesday morning to consolidate two runs into the others and then they distributed the information. We apologize to parents that it was last minute, but again, we lose people at last minutes. We're scrambling. So they were able to make it work and Wednesday and today, I think all the kids got to school and got home safely. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our transportation team for a great job.
Erin?
What a lot of folks said. I also want to highlight all the work the PSA has done to try to help with the distancing and getting all the kids into different rooms and to be able to still socialize but feel safe. I it is, it is hot and I'm glad we're doing the work we need to do financially and, you know, preparation-wise to redo HVAC because we want to do it right and not have three years later, quarters come through where something is the wrong size or roofs talking into the ceiling or whatever, whatever calamity befalls us as is typical. I do want to echo, you know, Virginia and Mary's concern. I I'm really appreciative that Dr. Pollenstock is going to meet with a team to evaluate our situation in an ongoing basis. We could go through high and substantial, I don't see moderate happening anytime soon, but I want us to be prepared and so I would be also in favor of revisiting the plan and I really look forward to hearing what they say on Monday.
Cory? John?
Also would like to thank PSA for all of their assistance. It's great to have the volunteers back in the school. I think we don't sometimes realize how much we depend on them for some of those little things, especially the little kids who need so much handholding and attention and there's a lot of milk cartons to open and there's a lot of little bags of chips to open. And the more hands we can have, the better it is certainly. Also to the Green Dragon Foundation, Courtyard's coming along and it's, you know, there've been an incredible partner with us to be able to augment some of the programs and services and even our facilities that we have that we otherwise really maybe wouldn't have the funding to do or we'd have to forego something else. It's good to be able to focus on the HVAC project, not just for air conditioning, but also the overall energy efficiency that we're going to get and just the ease of having things that work without having broken parts and having to cobble things together. That's a lot on our custodial maintenance staff. So it'll be good because they'll be able to focus on other things as well. Thank you.
I'll just add, it's great to hear, just hear from everyone and see the the school year getting kicked off and hearing a lot of activities. As I was walking in, the tennis team was just getting back. So again, it's just nice to see just a lot of these activities that are continuing. So it's great to see all of that. With that, we'll move on to.
I literally was like, my brain, I'm putting everything in, so I wouldn't mind if I could remind if I did.
Not at all.
Addison, Addison? How cool was that? And I meant to ask what happens next, you save the school and then go work and then the family goes to school. That's just, that's amazing. Seems to be kind of, I can't imagine that in high school. The musical instrument information section is just really made me smile. It's a normal thing. We all went through it with our kids. The violin, oh my gosh, that was painful, but it was wonderful.
Maybe in my future, so.
Yeah. And I want to thank our parents and the community. You know, they've been sharing their thoughts and opinions with us, but they've also been super supportive, right? We have parents who are having to write private when we're changing bus routes and when we're sending them emails saying we might have to close because of the heat. And we have teachers and staff who are really having to deal with some hardship in this heat. And I just want them to know that we really appreciate that and that we want them to be safe and you know, to let us know if that does not feel like it's the case. And I also would like to say that as we move into this, you know, as we're starting to see more and more and more cases, for me, at the end of the day, whatever we need to do to keep these kids safe and our teachers and staff safe, that's the most important thing. And as a community, I really want to see us get behind that. And I, and that's, that's the most important thing. So thank you all.
Thanks, Mary. We'll move on to citizen, excuse me, citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. John, do we have any one line?
Oh, looks like we've got some comments here. So, all right. Start at the beginning here. First comment is from Donna Ebenstein, 75 James Road here in Lewisburg. The school reopening last week failed to meet the expectations of our children. We have a fifth grader at Lindtown and an eighth grader at the middle school and both students told us about the experiences where they felt appropriate social distancing guidelines were not being maintained. The most concerning was lunch being served in a crowded cafeteria with no apparent attempts at spacing the students when all students have their masks off to eat. We have talked with principals and the superintendent about this and understand that improvements are underway, which we appreciate, but it was concerning that this was not an anticipated problem on day one. Last year, part of the COVID mitigation efforts was to spread children during eating, having some eat in their homerooms. Hence, there were mechanisms already established last year to provide some measure of social distancing during lunch. What is unclear to me is why these plans, as well as others, meant to encourage social distancing and reduce crowding seem to have been abandoned this year. We realize there are 20% more kids in school right now, but COVID is still here, more transmissible than before. Masking is not universal in the middle school or high school and yet the district has cut back on the other mitigation efforts too. If we want to keep our kids safe and school open, we need layered mitigation efforts, including universal masking and improved physical distancing. At Lindtown, we appreciated all the teachers being masked and the frequent outdoor mask breaks, but this wasn't enough to make our child feel safe there. We have transitioned him to online school again for a second year and we view this as our child being deprived of in-person education because of the district's unwillingness to uphold last year's precautions. They kept the schools open and kept kids safe. Finally, our child at the middle school also counted masked and unmasked students in her gym class on Monday. 22 of 51 were unmasked, which is 44%. And the Department of Health reports that less than 25% of teens in Union County have been fully vaccinated. Even if Lewisburg is outperforming the rest of the county, these numbers simply do not add up. The honor system is not working, which means students are not adhering to the safety plan as written. So we believe universal masking should be reinstated like last year. The other advantages of universal masking are that it treats everyone the same, removes the need to disclose who is vaccinated, removes the stigma of wearing or not wearing a mask and makes it easier for the district to contact trace. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment, Chris DeSantis, 164 Ridgeway. Last year, COVID precautions and mitigation steps were in use and successful. Will steps like social distancing, especially during lunch when students must unmask be reinstated? All reasonable steps should be taken considering increasing public spread. Comment from Sarah Rue, 147 Glenco Road. The below email was sent to all school board members on August 24th. We asked for the school board to amend the current safety plan so that it meets CDC guidance. To the LASD school board, I'm reaching out to you again about COVID safety in schools and on behalf of some other LASD parents who wanted to express similar concerns. We asked that the board reconsider adopting the August 12 safety plan, which was supported by the entire administrative team. The today's first COVID positive case in Kelly Elementary School should make us all appreciate that COVID is here and it will not stay within the Kelly School walls. We need to be proactive in addressing COVID with the tried and true tools that the school district used last year, plus any additional protection afforded by vaccines. But as we've all heard in the news, there are breakthrough infections in people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. People can still spread COVID through both unvaccinated and vaccinated. With many kids still ineligible for vaccines, we are not giving our kids the best chance at an in-person education, which we can all agree is the best environment for learning and development. Attached is a one-page slide that highlights some of the conditions for our community now faces with COVID, along with the table that shows how LASD responded last year and is responding so far this year. We don't think anyone regrets the actions the school board took last year to keep our kids safe and in schools in person. It's not clear why the school board has now chosen not to follow CDC guidance and do less with regard to school safety. We sincerely hope we can look back on the 21-22 school year without any regrets. And then there's a list of signatories. And number four, from David Christiansen-Garal, 229 North Second Street. Could the board members who voted against following the CDC guidance consider indoor masking? Please share their understanding of the latest research concerning the Delta variant, its transmissibility and virulence relative to the Alpha variant. Given these latest research findings, why has the school district taken steps to remove rather than supplement protection for our children at this time? And I'll refresh, see if there's any more. Nope, that's it.
All right. Here in the room, anybody who would like to make a comment to the board on any non-agenda items? Come up to the podium and please state your name and address for the board.
I'm Kristen Kraff. I live at 1495 Smolton Road. I was one of the parents that sent in the email that was just read. I don't think any of us think anyone who voted against the most recent health and safety plan did it because they weren't concerned about our student safety or that they weren't concerned about keeping our kids in school. I think we're all on the same page. We might disagree about how to go about that. But I think given the change just in the past few weeks, this has to be something that the board looks at. The CDC has chosen to use the word recommend. They are recommending that schools have universal masking. They're not recommending that schools recommend it. They're recommending that schools do it. By not doing that, we're not following CDC guidelines. I know many of you think you are and we're just not. Thank you. My name is Jamie Lyons, 386 Crossroads Drive, Lower Store, Pennsylvania. I have two comments. One, just to add on with the masking, since there are comments with that. Just on a personal note, I know a lot of times people are citing masking with issues with kids with perhaps breathing issues with asthma, things like that. I just want to note, my child has pretty severe asthma and I can say of the past year and a little bit we've been in school this year, the only day that my kid has searched out his emergency inhaler to bring to school was today because yesterday it was so hot in the school that it was affecting his asthma. So I do think when we think of that and with the kids, the heat has been more of an issue at some points than the issues with the masking. The other comment I want to make was about the staggered start dates. And I do believe that probably for the students, that has been easier with less kids starting on the first day of school. But if that's something that's going to continue in the future, I would recommend surveying the parents. That's something that at least I personally and the neighbors in my area have found really difficult this past week. I was lucky enough to have taken the entire week off of work for vacation, but if not, Tuesday, we had a kindergarten orientation smack in the middle of the day. I had one child that started on Wednesday because she was in kindergarten and I had two children that were starting on Thursday. There wasn't sack on Monday and Tuesday because it was in service days. So when we look at the availability of parents and what we're asking of them, if you have one child, it might be great to know your kindergartner is going into a school or you're a fourth grader or a ninth grader. But when you have multiple kids, the kindergartner would have been happy to have her brother and sister on the bus with her, those types of things. So it might be something that people really like, but I think it is worth surveying parents because it does make things very difficult for working families, for what we're asking on a time that's already very hectic on parents with the first day of school.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We will move on and I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Mrs. Brown, second by Dr. Dublonsky, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.